City of Lawrence, Common Council. Special meeting. Today is October 12, 2021. The meeting is now called to order. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Father, we thank you for an opportunity to gather here today. We ask that you bless each person present. We ask that you watch over our first responders and guide them. We ask that, and we pray that this meeting is successful, productive, and blessed. Please, Holy Father, guide us during our discussion. Give us wisdom concerning the issues that we face. Give us the glory for what we have accomplished. And please guide us. Hear us from our heart. Amen.
Okay, we have a quorum. It's like Counselor Freeman and Counselor Wells are joining via Zoom. Counselor Rusamoroff will not be present today, so all other counselors are present, either in person or via video. Okay. Do I have a list in the back of those who intend to speak? Okay, please note, per council rules, at any regular session of the council, the presiding officer may allow for time for comments by citizens of the city of Lawrence. Citizens' comments shall be limited to five minutes each unless extended by the presiding officer. Any person desiring to address the council must state his or her name and address for the record. Citizens' comments shall be made in an orderly and civil manner. The presiding officer may, in all respects, limit comments that are repetitive, uncivil, rude, discourteous, or insulting. So, let's start here. First, I want to start by saying that the majority of the council feels that we have approved an amended balanced budget for our city employees and public safety, despite the fact that there is a 0% pay increase that was negotiated in a contract. This resolution that I'm going to read to you will be on the next meeting agenda. A resolution regarding funding for 2022 salary increases. Whereas the Common Council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, is in the midst of considering the 2022 salary ordinances for civil, city, police, and fire employees, and whereas Lawrence's projected 2022 revenues are insufficient to increase salaries without transferring funds from the city's cash reserves, and whereas the council is concerned that funding salary increases from cash reserves is not sound fiscal policy. Section 1, the Common Council of the city of Lawrence intends to use funding from the city's first disbursement of $11,167,161 in coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds from H.R. 1319, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, otherwise known as ARP, to fund payroll contributions and to offset loss revenue caused by the pandemic, consistent with the requirements of federal law, U.S. Treasury guidance in 31 CFR Part 35, any other applicable regulations and state law. The council's intent is that ARP funding will be used in such a way as to fund a one-time 5% bonus for 2022, or 5% pay increase for 2022, for all city employees, essential and nonessential, full-time and part-time. This resolution will be heard at our next meeting, okay? And now we will open up the floor for public comment. First person on the list is Mayor Steve Collier.
Thank you, President Shavess and members of the council. I'd like to take a moment to provide you all with an update regarding our 2022 proposed budget. This year, we proposed a budget to the council that included the items below: a 5% raise for all city employees, 3% for EMS. Maintaining our 20% operating reserve, this is our fourth consecutive year of growing this reserve, projected this year to be at $9.1 million. We've also imposed a $3.6 million in one-time expenditures from that reserve. Community parking lots, about $1 million. Trail expansions, $1.7 million. $500,000 to match next-level trails grant. $1.25 million for a Lee Road trail expansion. Pickleball expansion, $450,000. Park signage, park playground equipment upgrades, government center remodeling and updating. As you can see, most of the OR that we want to move into the general fund essentially is to improve our parks. It's important to note that our proposed budget is a balanced and responsible budget that prioritizes retaining our valued employees through raises while continuing to invest in our community through one-time expenditures. I would also like to note that these one-time expenditures are only possible through our fiscally responsible approach to budgeting and spending. Since 2016, we have increased the general fund's balance to a healthy level. We are currently projecting during 2021 with roughly a $9 million in general fund operating reserve balance. These funds are generally reserved to reinvest in our city through one-time capital projects. This is well above our target of $4.6 million. Unfortunately, even though we provided a highly transparent proposed budget, the council is determined to make dramatic cuts. None of these proposed cuts are appropriate or in any way needed. I believe it's important that everyone in this room is made aware of how these unnecessary cuts will impact all departments. $2.3 million from salaries. At this time, we are not sure how significant of an impact this will have, but it will be substantial. This may result in pay cuts or reduction in staff throughout the city. We are able to get a little better picture now of what the near-term and long-term impact will be. Unfortunately, it appears the council chose to use it based on the 2020 proposed budget prior to the 5% increase provided in June of 2021. This results in substantially more than just a 5% reduction proposed by the council. In fact, because they removed many salaries that were either unfunded or simply removed from their position, in my case, Deputy Mayor, Director of Economic Development, Corporate Council, and Assistant City Attorney, and Events Coordinator, this will result in an overall 5% reduction of current salaries. I'll read that again. It will result in a 5% reduction in current salaries. In addition to cuts in funding personal services, there are debilitating cuts in operations to the following departments: $145,000 from Department of Public Works, $237,000 from Police, $207,000 from Fire, $102,000 from Parks, $250,000 from Controller's Office, and $181,000 in the Mayor's Office. My budget is zero next year. Most notably, while the council has proposed cutting salaries along with every single department budget, they still managed to give themselves an additional $50,000 in capital outlay. This additional $50,000 puts their total capital budget $300,000 in 2022. It's worth noting, the council has never spent more than $40,000 out of the capital budget. Further to put this in perspective, the council's changes result in their budget being $318,000 higher than the Mayor's budget. This council also chose to increase the pay of members of the BZA from $600 to $3600 a year, a 600% increase, along with increases to every board except the Board of Works. In real terms, this council's proposed budget will result in somewhat dramatic staff reductions. By the close of 2022, we will have to lay off one employee from DPW, four employees from the Police Department, four employees from LFD, three employees from Parks, three employees from Mayor's Staff Administrative Assistance that has already been done, three employees from Dispatch, three full-time positions. Those cuts will be even deeper in 2023 if changes aren't made.
Mayor, I'll give you 30 more seconds, please.
It's hard for me to fathom the reason for these draconian measures that are entirely without merit. In fact, I have no idea where these figures came from. I can assure you that Baker Tilly is not on board with these proposals, so the question that needs to be answered at some point simply is why.
Next, we have Dino Pitalis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Some of the things that I wanted to address with the council tonight is that when, at the last finance meeting, we were given a book with all the cuts, and so when everything out of my budget was cut underneath other, prior to that, I never received a phone call, a text, an email, zero communication with myself or any of the other department heads. These cuts were just made, just, I don't know if they were done at random, but other, everything in my other category, which included physicals for the firefighters, machines that regulate the air, that the firefighters wear on their back, it checks the air quality, the filters, it gauges the air going in these tanks, that was removed. Of course, in our fire safety protection services for the firehouses. We had our generator maintenance, which this council has asked me several times, is our generators up and running? So, for the very fact that you've asked me to do these things, we've got everything up and running, that was totally cut out. We have alarm panels and maintenance that was cut out. We also have our drug and alcohol screenings, our fit-for-duty exams. A lot of the stuff that I'm reading to you are NFP mandates, which we already signed contracts because we're mandated, and I would just have liked the opportunity to address the council, it had just been asked. You can't put the cart before the horse, cut, and then come back and say, let's talk about it. These were done. So, it puts me in a very terrible position, and when I talk to a couple of counselors, they go, well, the money's there, you just got to come and ask for it. Well, I don't have time to do that. It's, you know, these appropriations take whatever, seven to nine weeks to get done. It's not an overnight process, and what this does, it cuts into my day-to-day operations of running this fire department. That is not the council's job. That is my job. And we can't go along with these like this and be micromanaged. If that's the case, we don't need, the mayor, we don't need any department heads. It's just, it's an issue that, I would ask that same question, why? We've had five proposed budgets. The growth in the city is just unbelievable. The morale, the attitude of the employees has never been higher. This is the most, I've been around this city for 33 years. This is the most transparent, and I've seen a city administration be with the council and also the citizens of this city. There should, any questions that are asked, there's a budget book that was never done before, there's a budget book, there, I've seen this council in past years wait nine months to get financials from the Controller's Office. I think that this has been a very transparent administration. I just, I can't wrap my arms around how we have this growth in the city, even from a fiscal standpoint or the things going around us, and then we have this. This proposed budget right now put a dagger in the employees of the city. They've worked, they've worked hard, and I'm not going to speak for the police, although I probably could, but public safety during this COVID, we had to come to work every single day. We didn't have a choice, to sit at home, working from home, we were mandated to come in. You know, those lives are put at risk to protect everybody on this council and the citizens that we serve. You know, the whole thing is this, you may break us down once, but we're going to stand united, we're going to still do our job, but I think, I think it's a total shame, the position you've put me in to run this fire department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On Monday, September 27th of this year, 15 days ago, I stood right here before the Finance Subcommittee of the Lawrence Common Council, and I expressed my hope, my faith, my optimism about the excellent financial health of the city of Lawrence and how we have come a long way in so many areas. I spoke of things like bond rating improvements, an operating reserve that is the envy of other similarly sized cities, an award-winning budget presentation for five consecutive years, and the importance of collaboration in reaching consensus and building a budget that funds the services of our taxpaying citizens, your constituents, that they demand. Just one week later, on October 4th, at a similar budget meeting, I was given a list of all the 2022 spending reductions that are planned in Proposals 12, 13, and 15, relative to the funds and line items in all departments. Not one line item was publicly discussed, and I was not contacted about them, but I was grateful, and I thank you, for at least providing me a list of the cuts that nearly all of you approved. After studying that list of cuts that you're recommending, I think it's important that I explain to everyone just what impact this will have on the men and women of the Lawrence Police Department, and more importantly, on all of those who depend on the service and protection that we provide every single day and night. The cuts you are recommending, in amended Proposal 12, as written, eliminate funding for our officers' body-worn cameras. This system has been a huge success in helping us build the trust and confidence of our citizens, and especially our citizens of color, because they show exactly what it is that our officers do, and the reality of our police professionalism and fairness. All funding for the maintenance and routine repairs of our new police station headquarters will no longer be provided. We will be unable to pay for custodial and cleaning services in our new 12-point, whatever million-dollar facility. Also removed was our ability to have our grass mode and other basic landscaping needs throughout the year. Eliminated from the 2022 LPD budget is funding for our fire alarm monitoring service, which is used to detect smoke and fire, sound alarms, and alert the fire department and LPD command staff of an emergency. Because these cuts involve the cleaning, maintenance, health, and safety of the building, I will obviously be forced to close the doors of our new police station to the public, to your constituents who expect to be able to walk into our building for specialized police services. We will be losing access to the countywide mugshot photograph system that helps our detectives and our victims of crime identify criminal suspects and bring them to justice. We will lose the ability to destroy crime guns and illegal drugs taken off of our streets. Those, I assume, will just have to pile up in our property room. Our copier contracts will not be funded. Our subscriptions to software programs that are essential to our daily operations will be gone in 2022. And as devastating as all that sounds, those things I just mentioned, those are just a tiny fraction of what has me deeply concerned for 2022. If the recommended cuts and the amended proposal actually happen as written, we will see a $2.3 million reduction in the general fund for personal services. That's also known as salaries. And while I'm still in the process of analyzing the exact impact of this reduction, a conservative estimate of the number of police officers, firefighters, dispatchers, and civilian employees who will not be funded in the city of Lawrence in 2022 climbs well into double digits. These are people and families. The remaining employees who are not let go, of course, as we heard earlier, will certainly not receive the pay raises they expected, as inflation in this country skyrockets. I've heard that almost everything I'm discussing can, in fact, be funded throughout 2022. All department heads, all we need to do is come to the council and participate in a process known as appropriations. Even if this process of appropriations wasn't time-consuming, as Chief Pitalis pointed out, and burdensome, it's totally unnecessary, because I'm standing before you now, asking for the funds to operate my department next year, just like I and the other department heads have done for five award-winning years. Appropriations are intended, it's my belief, for unexpected, unplanned events and expenses. An example would be if the cost of gas goes up to seven or eight bucks.
30 seconds, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. If it goes up to, if gas goes up, we would have to come back to you in July and request more funding. So, I will close by imploring you to reconsider the devastating cuts to public safety you have proposed. We have seen firsthand how defunding the police in communities across the country is an emotional, disastrous idea that is proving to have deadly results. I know that's not your intent. Proposal 12, in its current form, does exactly that. In fact, the fact is, the city of Lawrence is very well-funded, has an operating reserve, a savings account, so to speak, that is larger than even your own consultants believe it should be.
5 seconds, Chief.
And it makes me confident that you can restore my hope and faith and optimism in the days and weeks to come by finding a way to collaborate, to adopt what I'm sure will be another award-winning budget in the city of Lawrence.
Mr. Salisbury.
Scott Salisbury, 56, 53, Wallingwood Drive. Good evening, Council President Shavess and council members. I would like to speak tonight in my capacity as a concerned citizen, I'm not here as a department head, I am a city employee. I'm not here to explain any part of the budget proposed by the controller and administration. I'm just seeking to understand the motivation behind the drastic cuts you have made to the proposed budget. A balanced budget, which maintains operating reserves at an optimum level and adequately covers the expected expenses for the year as provided by the department heads and staff responsible to do so. The budget process and methodology has not changed compared to the past five GFOA award-winning budgets presented by the administration and adopted by the council. In 2022, the city will be able to do even more one-time capital projects to make the city better for its citizens, such as adding trails, improvements to buildings and properties, and other projects. I don't think there is anyone who has been paying attention who would deny that the budget preparation that has been done under Mayor Collier's administration are a vast improvement over what has gone before, and no one can deny the significant improvements made to this city and its operations, too. The council was an integral part of this unprecedented success, so what has changed? As I understand it, the proposed cuts will eliminate up to 20 police and fire positions. In addition, the mayor's budget is eliminated, many of his staff as well. This will effectively shut down the mayor's office. How is this helpful to the citizens? The DPW staff and budget is cut, so what services will be scaled back or eliminated by these cuts? The Parks Department will lose employees. How will this improve the operations of the Parks Department? I can only hope that these cuts were made without fully understanding the consequences. The past five years were a model for cooperation and communication between the administration and the council. Things were, and still are, getting done at an unprecedented level. Miles of new road paving projects have been done, drainage improvements, the cultural campus and arts for Lawrence, the city's bond rating upgrades, parks and street department buildings have seen improvements, new equipment has been purchased, more infrastructure maintenance and repair work is getting done than ever before, and more infrastructure improvements are being planned or constructed. Body-worn cameras were deployed for LPD. A new LPD headquarters building, long overdue and sorely needed, was built. Our economic development team has been busily putting Lawrence back on the map, making Lawrence a place where businesses and people want to live, work, and play. Consider the Trades District Initiative and the redevelopment already happening there, and the significant improvements on the Fort Harrison property, with even more new projects coming. New jobs and businesses are springing up because people are taking notice of Lawrence now. Upwards of $30 million has been spent on water and sanitary sewer infrastructure improvements. Two new water treatment facilities, one rehabilitated water plant, well improvements, and thousands, thousands of linear feet of new water main work have been completed. The city has taken back control of its own destiny with regard to stormwater, too. Soon, the stormwater utility will be addressing lingering drainage issues that have adversely impacted our citizens for years. All of these things and more, done in a spirit of trust, cooperation, and a shared desire to do what is best for the city, make Lawrence a great place to live, work, and play. And everyone plays a part, from the administration and the administrative staff, to the operations staff that run the various departments and operations of the city, and to the council and other governing bodies, all doing their part to review and approve, excuse me, approve sound, sensible, and responsible budgets, adopting necessary rate increases and other ordinances, other ordinance changes that benefit the city. This teamwork needs to continue. We must continue to build on the past five years of unqualified success. I'm not exactly sure what changed this year and why this budget had turned into such a contentious process. All I can say is that the citizens of Lawrence, your constituents, will not be served by losing 20 public safety employees, many civilian positions in the operations, a functioning mayor's office, and it will not be served by a degraded capacity to deliver vital city services and to make improvements. Let us not follow the example of partisan bickering and divisiveness exhibited on the national level, but strive to remain a model of the bipartisan spirit of cooperation and trust that resulted in the vastly improved city we all now enjoy. We did all this together, and we can and should continue to do so for the good of all of Lawrence's citizens and the business community. It is my sincerest hope that we will all come together, resolve this matter in a spirit of mutual trust and cooperation, as was done before, for the good of the city. Let's keep Lawrence moving forward. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Anderson. I live at 6722 Silver Tree Drive. I am a business leader and community activist in the Lawrence community for the past 15 years. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I have reviewed the recent Common Council meeting and was disheartened by the behavior of all parties involved. Regarding the proposed budget, I trust in Mayor Collier and his team to propose a balanced and equitable budget, as they have done in the past. It is my understanding that it has been an award-winning budget for the past five years. I want to share a personal story with you this evening, in hopes it connects a reasoning as why this budget should be supported. In 2019, my ex-husband suffered a massive heart attack at our home, and it took seven minutes for police and paramedics to arrive. Officer Mateo Agresta and paramedic Jody Bowdenhorn were two individuals that were there to help. They have been well-trained and dedicated to their job and are the reason my son's father is still alive. It took seven minutes of CPR and crying for help that heroes like this arrived and gave me hope and peace. They saved his life, and this is the reason to approve this proposed budget. We need more police and paramedics. We need to support and encourage top talent in our Lawrence community. It is our responsibility, and it is responsible for us, to increase the salaries of essential workers and the payroll, not decrease or eliminate. I want to see our community continue to grow for my son. He is four. I want all Lawrence families to experience a moment of hope for our men and women that save lives. Please help continue to save lives in our community. Thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your continued support in growing the Lawrence. the Lawrence community. Thank you for the support of our first responders, for their families and for my family. Thank you for supporting the act of saving lives. Without them, my son would not have a father. Thank you.
Next, we have Renee Raffala.
My name is Renee Raffala. I reside at 7414 East 47th Street here in Lawrence. I've been employed with the city of Lawrence for 22-plus years, and I'm speaking tonight not only as a lifelong resident of this community, but as a long-term employee who will be affected adversely by the budget amendments that have been proposed by this council and that are being considered this evening. While I understand that it is this council's responsibility to look out for the best interest of the city of Lawrence when it comes to approving a budget, I do not understand the council's logic in blindly cutting several budget items that not only affect the operations of the city, but different departments and affects the benefits of the city employees. For example, a major item of concern for me in the amended budget is cutting the budget for personal services for all departments by $2,347,195. That is a huge cut for personal services. It includes regular pay, longevity, tech pay, overtime, the employer's share of our social security, Medicare, perf, unemployment, health and life insurance, and the clothing allowance, just to name a few. This cannot and should not happen. The proposed budget cut for personal services is so huge that it takes this line item back to the 2019 budget. If that's the case, it makes me assume that all the pay raises that we were given for 2020 and 2021 will be cut, and the employees' pay will revert back to that 2019 amount. That is not fair. That is not reasonable for any employee, including myself, who tirelessly work every single day to make this community and this city better. So what I would like to know is, where exactly is this $2,347,195 reduction coming from? Are positions being eliminated? That's what it sounds like to me. Is the city no longer going to offer benefits? I'm not speaking, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure other employees are on the same page. If you take my pay rate back to 2019 and you stop funding our benefits, I will be submitting my notice for retirement, and I'm sure others will, too. I'd also like to take a moment to talk about the proposed budget cuts for DPW because that's the department I work in. You're proposing to completely defund line item 436010. This ledger code is for the repairs and maintenance of the government center building. Expenses such as heating, electrical and plumbing repairs are paid from here. It also covers the alarm system for the building, elevator maintenance, fire extinguisher inspections, just to name a few. How do we propose to pay for these items if this fund is eliminated? The proposal also intends to defund line item 439020. This line item pays for the violation property remediation services. Without this fund, the code enforcement program is gone. We no longer can improve the appearance of properties in the city by mowing vacant properties or removing trash from them. This year alone, we have contracted for 91 properties to be maintained. What is this city going to look like if we can't maintain the properties by removing the trash and mowing the grass? I don't want to see a city that looks like that. You sure aren't going to bring developers in here and people who want to boost our economic development. I find it funny that the council has a budget line item for other that wasn't eliminated. This is Fund 444010 for special projects. In 2019, your budgeted amount was $13,000. In 2020, it jumped to $27,500. In 2021, that budget line skyrocketed and provided $320,000 for your special projects. While I appreciate that it was reduced for the 2022 budget to 300,000, as a resident and a taxpayer, I want to know what projects the council intends to do in 2022. Are we paying for privately owned buildings to have new roofs and HPAC systems, or are we funding butterfly gardens? Just curious. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and hope that the council will take a closer look at the budget and the line items that you're amending to find out exactly what those line items fund before making a final decision for the 2022 budget.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Judy Byron. I live at 5762 Lotton Loop West Drive, and I'm also the executive director for Arts for Lawrence. And I'm here to speak in support of the city's proposed budget prior to the amendments. I recognize that the budget is $3 million of reserve funds, and I understand how that could seem problematic, but I also understand that the city is in a very healthy financial position with an estimated $9.1 million in reserves by the end of this year. So adopting this proposal would leave the city with a healthy $5 million in that reserve fund if the budget was left as it is. So I can't speak to fire and police or DPW, but there is a line item in the budget that I can speak to, and that is the Parks Department. The Parks Department is our partner at Arts for Lawrence with the, excuse me, with the Fort Ben Cultural Campus. The Fort Ben Cultural Campus is a $6 million asset of the city of Lawrence, and it is getting statewide recognition. Arts for Lawrence maintains the artwork on the campus, the musical swings, the marching sidewalks, the facilities of the Visual Arts Center and the theater, and the Parks Department maintains the Starett Center and the grounds. However, the Fort Ben Cultural Campus deserves a lot more than just maintenance. We are on track to be recognized as a statewide cultural district, but it takes the support of the city for us to follow that track. I'm here in support of the Parks Department. I'm here in support of the city and in their investment in our community because I find that these investments in our community make it better for investors to come. It makes our home values go up. It makes it just a stronger city to live, work and play in. So thank you for your time, and please reconsider your amendments to the city's proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Hardy, 10810 Indian Lake Boulevard, South Drive. Firstly, I just want to say I love this city. I grew up here most of my life. I graduated from Lawrence North High School, actually played football for Coach Collier, now Mayor Collier. And one of the biggest things that everybody talks about, especially politicians, is public safety. What always happens, and I've seen it for 34 years working for this city and the fire department, we're all one team, yet you find ways to either cut or go against the same things that you fight for. I want to recognize and thank this outstanding fire department back here that you see. This brave police department right behind me. These public empoliers for DPW and the water company. They're the reason I'm up here, and this is the reason I love this city and I live here. If I call 911, I know somebody's going to be there within minutes. I know it. So I'm up here asking why. You talk about constituents all the time, your citizens, our citizens, me, my family. Did you at any point contact, call, meet with any citizens and tell them, hey, we're going to cut this city budget, and these cuts are going to do this? It's going to affect fire, it's going to affect police, EPW? Did any one of you, and raise your hands, let's be transparent, okay? And you're telling me that they were okay with that? That they, well, I'm just asking on record, were they okay with it? How many in this room were contacted as a citizen?
Sir, sir, this is not an open debate. This is just for you to make comments, so please just make comment. This isn't a debate.
Okay, sorry. Well, I can tell you personally, I was never called at any point, never contacted, never asked. So when you go to your families tonight, or even in the past, I don't know, the past few days, did you ask your families, hey, is this a good thing if we cut public safety? If we cut DPW? I'm asking you to go back and think about what you're doing. We've been here before. We don't need, we need to be a team here. We need to stop going against each other for whatever reason, whatever agenda anybody has. These brave men and women behind me come in here every day to do this job and do it well. Don't take their tools away. Don't hurt their families by taking their pay away. Do your job and do it tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Nick Remmel.
How's everybody?
Good.
Good. My name is Nick Remmel. I live at 10940 Limbok Court, District 6, Lawrence, Indiana. Good evening, Madam President, City Councilors, Mr. Mayor and our public safety family. I have the privilege of living, working and representing our public safety family here in this growing city. I am also currently the union president. I moved to Lawrence when I was three. I have lived in four of the six districts in Lawrence and been a resident for 34 years, and I am a proud alum of Lawrence North High School. I've seen this city grow in many aspects, and I have seen many areas fail as well. Once upon a time, a counselor that sits among you today said that they were passionate about Lawrence and wanted this city to be a place that their children would be proud to raise their families. Let that sink in because that resonated with me as a person who is proud to live in this diverse city and also wants the very best for their children. This city has come a long way because of passion, dedication, determination and careful planning. We didn't get to where we are today by working against each other, but have broken down political barriers and brought through, brought this city from nearly nothing to a financially sound city. For that, I thank you. Now, historically, public safety in Lawrence has been paid lower than a majority of our Marion County counterparts. The police and fire departments took many years without pay increases to ensure the city could operate responsibly. We laid off our civilian EMS workers in the past, and the firefighters took on extra work while receiving virtually no raise during that time. Our budgets were cut, and we still provided a high level of care while the city rebounded financially and our department's members suffered. I for one am happy and relieved that those times are behind us. We have operated through this pandemic and have provided the same high level of care that this city demands and deserves of us despite the fear of the constant unknown of what this pandemic could mean for our citizens and for our families who have been undeniably exposed to this deadly virus due to our line of work, while our EMS runloads have increased by nearly 30%. All of us here raised our hand to serve this great community and will continue to do so with pride. We found new ways of doing business while taking as many precautions as we can to protect our members. I would like to quote one of my firefighter brothers in saying, "Nothing prepares you to be hidden behind a mask when you are trying to show empathy to those who have experienced a loss or trying to be the face of reassurance at a time of need." I won't even begin to tell you the mental effect or strain that these past two years have had on your public safety family. Oh, well, it's what we signed up for, right? No, we are human, too. Nobody signs up to see what we can't unsee or hear what we can't unhear. Every one of us in this room has experienced loss during this pandemic, and we will never be able to anticipate what tomorrow brings. I for one have learned to seize every opportunity to make a difference in someone's life, to love unconditionally, to never miss an opportunity to love someone, to never miss an opportunity to tell someone the truth, and to love all fiercely and without question, even in the midst of hate. I have spoken to a few of you in regards to future goals of the fire department and one of those which involves diversification. As a member of this public safety family and as a lifelong resident, I believe it's a tragedy that our departments do not mirror our demographic, and I have made this known on multiple occasions. Our department has made strides to reach out to different groups, including the Black Firefighters Union, and have presented to their membership the advantages of coming to work for the city of Lawrence. Our fire chief and mayor were applauded at this presentation that they put together. Sure, I could stand up here and tell you that I work for the best of the best, and I wouldn't be lying, but it becomes a hard sell, it becomes hard to sell this department to someone applying for a job when we don't, do not match or aren't even competitive with surrounding departments, but still are required to do the same job. In fact, just this last week, both departments lost members due to better opportunities. I want you all to imagine two firefighters standing on a roof operating and doing the same job. One firefighter works for Indianapolis, the other one works for Lawrence. Both of these firefighters have families, and they both tragically fall through the roof and sustain the same injuries that are career-ending. The LFD firefighter receives less money and benefits than the IFD member next to him, well, them. Their sacrifice is worth less monetarily to the city, but cost the exact same to their families, all while those members work in a city that pays their city council and administration what appears to be parity with Indianapolis. These members you see behind me don't see money signs when that dispatch tone goes off, but they uphold their end of the bargain to the citizens of Lawrence. They protect our families, and although things don't go 100% right 100% of the time in our line of work, I am proud that when I call 911, this is the family that responds to my home. In closing, I want you all to know that our public safety family is united. Budget cuts come and go, just as politicians come and go. In the past few weeks, some decisions were made to cut essential department line items that ensure the safety of our police and fire, all while increasing the council budget by over $50,000. The Controller and Mayor are ensuring a budget that will be sustainable for the city's future. I am pleading and praying with you all to invest in us and make, make a decision based on what is right and what moves our city onward. I pray for wisdom for each of you as we work through this conflict, and I'm confident that the Lord will guide the city government and we will find a solution. I stand up here today representing the best, and I will do everything in my power to protect each and every one of them as they provide us peace in our homes. Personnel cost cuts come from somewhere, and I will not stand up here and watch another member get laid off or lose their job without fighting and protecting them. I will not stand up here and turn a blind eye to budget cuts coming from essential services in our city. Every member here has their own story and represents their own family. They aren't just numbers, but an investment for this city. We talked about the why. Everybody keeps asking why. Let's talk about the how. We move onward together, not divided.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not really sure where I'm going to go with a lot of this because, you know, for five years, I've kind of stepped back, and this city's been running great. The mayor's been good to us, the council's been good to us, I mean, everything's good. And I've And I went through 12 years of hell as the FLP president here, but a recommendation is Tom Ashcraft, 5880 Boy Scout Road. Anyway, we went through hell trying to get things accomplished, then now the clear blue sky now. I thought things were right, all good, and you're taking away money from us. You're taking away funds. You're taking away body cams to say you're—so much protection for us for accusations. I wish they could let you see all the body cams every day because you'd really see how our job has such a damp—a negative effect on us. But we have to go home. We have to take care of our kids. We have to go forward. You know, officer wellness programs are the highest in the country now because they have to. PTSD is the highest in the country because they have to. 400 police officers. Names are going on the wall on Saturday for line of duty deaths to include COVID. I just don't get it. We—we got—it—we need to look at the big picture here. We work so well together. You've got the best public safety right behind us. You've got the best Parks Department and DPW, and they go on. They've been good. Don't—don't mess it up. You know, next year, I'm gone, but you don't think I won't complain? I still—I'm living here. I'm going to complain because if I don't get, you know, my services—and that's what I want—I—I don't—you know, I work day shift. I take runs all day long. I hear people all day. They thank us. They appreciate us. We don't get—you know, sure, the bad guys don't like us that much, but for the most part, we get respected. But the bottom line to it all, what happened? I mean, really, the Parks Department—I see people there every morning on Franklin Road, the runners, the workout teams, all these people, and they're over there, and they would enjoy to see a nice parking lot instead of white lines. They would enjoy—you know, the extra—the refurbished reserve account? Let's use our money to make our city go forward. Please, it's in your hands. I mean, let's—we got a good contract. We had good negotiations. We're putting it all together. Please help us. Thank you.
Good evening. Mel Keaton, 12322 Cobblestone Court. I stand tonight at this podium in opposition of the amended budget, and I'll speak to its why. I've been a proud member of the city of Lawrence for 22 years now, and I have been very fortunate to watch this leadership in this city over the last several years take us from the brink of fiscal failure and—and collapse. And I commend, like others have this evening, this council and our leadership across the city that has made that happen and taken us into a new place where roads are paved, our parks look better, and public safety is well-funded. I also serve in public safety for the last 26 years as the staff chaplain for Police and Fire and also as a reserve officer, which is a volunteer position. I am currently a paid city employee. I love this city. I love the men and women of our public safety, and I get up every morning to serve them, to help them, to make sure that they are well-served, and I am concerned as a citizen of what's going to happen if—if this amended budget goes through. I watch our council meetings routinely. I watch subcommittees like the Finance Committee, and it concerns me when I watch what happened in the most recent meetings where things got so contentious and people were talking past one another and not able to hear one another. When I think of the leadership of this city, I am proud of the work that you all have done and thankful, and thank you for the work you've done. But when I watch things that happened like in the last couple council meetings that really—the last couple Finance Committee meetings—that—that seriously concerns me as a citizen about where we're headed. As I mentioned, I serve in public safety. I've responded to thousands of emergencies in the past 26 years as a chaplain or a reserve officer. However, on September 9th, I was the emergency. I suffered a cardiac event, which became ended up being cardiac arrest. The—the professionals on Engine 36 and Medic 37 saved my life that night. Fortunately, I was in the care of two competent paramedics when I went into cardiac arrest in the back of that ambulance on the way to Methodist Hospital. They saved my life. And it concerns me if we defund our public safety, what that hap—what happens to those professionals? What happens to response times? It concerns me. I shudder to think what kind of response time it would take to get someone to an emergency to save a life like my life was saved on September 9th. And so as I—as I finish my comments, I just want to say that I pray for this city. I pray for our members of public safety. I pray for this council. And I ask you—I implore you as a citizen of this city, and I speak on behalf of the four voting citizens that live in my household, we stand in opposition to this amendment. I ask you to reconsider your stance and reconsider for the better of Lawrence. I—I believe you really do want to serve this city well, and I ask you to reconsider this amended budget for the betterment and for the—for the well-being of our city. Thank you.
The Controller. That's what changed. We have had a collaborative budget process for the six years that I've set up here. We have had department heads attend each budget meeting and answer questions. That's what we've done for six years. You want to ask me what changed? That changed. The budget process was stalled by the Controller's refusal to answer questions. Both chiefs were at that meeting representing the administration, and there were several other members of the administration there. I am upset that any term like "defund the police" would be used towards this council who has supported every single police and fire pay increase, building a police station, building a fire station, and all equipment. There has not been one thing that this council has denied our public safety. The last two years, 5% pay increases. Every year before that, 3% pay increases. What changed? The Controller. He's not here. Oh, he's here. Great. It doesn't matter if you're here if you refuse to answer questions. You can't have a collaborative budget process if people aren't willing to answer questions. It starts there. I received an email of apology from the mayor and the Controller themselves because of the level of disrespect and the demeanor that was used through this whole process. Nothing's changed for this council that's sitting up here. We want to do the right thing for the right reasons for this city as we always have and we will continue to do so. The resolution that I read says that we're all behind making sure that our public safety and our city—let's not forget our city employees. Nobody forgot about you that you get your 5% increases. We need to put our money where our mouth is. The art funds that come in, they need to fund your pay increases. Are we going to spend down the 20%? We absolutely are. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, there is none. We're a jern.